District Board to order, it's September eleventh, twenty twenty five. Roll call. Kevin Henderson. Chrissy Howe. Andrew Tangs. I have a motion to, or I have a motion for a pretty committee from the August fourteenth.
Take the motion.
Motion by Kevin. Seconded by Christie. Approve the minutes from the first public hearing.
You want me to read them? Well, you can, you can read them after this meeting, okay? Am I going to read them out loud to you? All right, I'll provide a copy for you. And you can have that, all right?
It was a public hearing over the bond.
But it was a notice, why is that? How was I known?
You followed the appropriate channels.
Which is what?
Posted in the paper and posted in the environment.
All right, we're not going to engage in this conversation, we got things to.
You know, trying to hide this stuff from us, you don't try hard to, they're dead long. They're there this weekend, why didn't you take four point seven million dollars, let's see. Because you're too scared, great.
Yeah, okay.
You didn't want to break it on them.
Jacob.
Sorry, I lost my place, what we, uh, resolution. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two, if everybody recalls from the last meeting, we by consensus put a pause to the bond issuance of the twelve point seven million dollars. We've heard your concerns, we're trying to address them, or we're working to address them. Uh, part of the, uh, part of the consensus was to pause the bond, but we need to officially, officially pause the bond via resolution, which I have drafted here this evening. Resolution essentially just says, um, we're putting a pause to the bond. When we revise the number and come back with a new number, because, again, I think we all agree we need a new firehouse. Uh, when we come back with a revised number, uh, we will have at least two more public hearings. Those will again be noticed in the paper, and they will be published, they will be posted, uh, on the firehouse door, they will be circulated through the Facebook channels. They will be given to people that, uh, have provided me their email address. Um, and I've been sending public meeting notices to, uh, directly. In any case, with that, uh, I have a copy of that resolution, uh, for board approval, and I'd be happy to take questions from the board with respect to it.
Take a motion to approve.
Take the motion.
Seconded by Kevin. All those in favor? Motion carries, please be gone.
Okay, um, had a note here for a transition of construction consultants, uh, part of our task to cut costs in this. We've looked at our agreements with our various consultants, the architect, the engineer, the construction manager. Um, I've analyzed them, I do have a recommendation, or recommended motion, um, really to authorize the president, uh, and the attorney to transition away from the current retained construction managing consultant, uh, authorize retention of a new consultant if the president finds, uh, appropriate. So move.
Kevin makes a motion. Seconded by Christie. All those in favor?
Okay, um, next, we had addressing questions from the previous meeting, which I did my best to take down. Of course, as all of you probably know by now, uh, meetings are posted, uh, next day on YouTube, uh, can be found by searching at Nineveh Fire Protection District on YouTube. I'm having difficulties streaming the actual video. We're live right now. Microsoft Teams takes a transcript of everything, I think some of you have found that out. YouTube also transcribes what is being said. Uh, for whatever reason, I can't get the video to upload to YouTube, so you can't see everybody, but the sound should be there. Uh, still working that out, it might be that I try to livestream directly from YouTube. I just, I haven't figured that out yet. Um, and I know some of you had had issues with the link that pu- uh, published in the notices, because you can't click on it. Uh, and it's a long link, so I'll try to cram that or create a special link, so it's easier for you guys to type in to find the meetings and the livestream in the event you can't be here. Um, couple other statements, uh, you know, there, there's been some discussion from people that don't live within the district, or live in Brown County, or live in Morgantown. I want to be clear that this bond issuance would not affect those people. Uh, if you are here, that's great, uh, I'm happy you're here from those towns and you're involved in the public discussion, but if you're going to comment, maybe let the, the people that this affects comment before you jump in, uh, as well. Um, over the past several weeks, there's been cooperation with the district and the State Board of Accounts regarding an audit. We are in the middle of performing an audit, we do anticipate the results. Um, we can't publish the results until the State Board of Accounts publishes the results. Uh, but we do anticipate receiving those in the next couple weeks. Um, once we do, those will be out online, I think someone has probably already found the previous SPOA, uh, audit, maybe even has some concerns with that. I'm, I'm hopeful that this new one, once it's finally complete, um, will show some progress in the district in the past three-year audit period. Um, district has been in communication, uh, arc with the architect, engineer, uh, construction manager regarding the estimated cost of the projects. We've provided them with copies of Trafalgar's fire station, um, which I think was constructed in twenty eighteen. Uh, so, I don't know what the exact construction cost was, I'm sure someone here does, I think it was around two million. Um, okay, one point four million, thank you.
Just one here?
No. This fire, this firehouse is. So, so we've, so we've provided the, uh, architect and the engineer with that copy. Um, we anticipate probably making some modifications to that, uh, after discussions with, uh, Chief Dunn over at Trafalgar, what he likes, what he doesn't like, reviewing it, um, making it fit sort of our style and our needs. I don't know, I think it's twelve. Oh, let me get, okay, I think it's about twelve thousand. Twelve thousand, according to one of your, one of your other friends, so in any case, that's what we're, we're looking at. Um, looking at taking out some other cost as well, um, but nonetheless, we are working to reduce the cost, again, if we end up issuing a bond, we will have at least two more public hearings, those public hearings will be noticed through, through the appropriate channels. Um, and you guys will have another opportunity to express your opinion as to our newly revised number. So where did that number come from? Where did that twelve point seven number come from? Uh, it came from the construction manager. Uh, and based on that company's experience, construction trade, site work, construction costs, contingency fa- costs, soft costs, uh, bond fees, insurance, capitalized interest, uh, estimated cost of the purchase of a new fire truck. Uh, we had a question as to whether or not we're purchasing a new fire truck, we're trying. Um, before all you guys got here, we tried to start up the one that we have, uh, that's, that's owned, uh, and it took two minutes, uh, to get it up and going. Um, so I think we need a new fire truck, I think everybody understands that.
We're on one point two.
So, that's a good question. That's one of these here in the, uh, script, so to speak. We don't split it out because it would require two different bonds, and you want to avoid splitting costs, because if you bond now on a new fire station, and let's, for example, say that cost is five million dollars. Just saying it's five million dollars, for example. We will incur five hundred thousand in soft costs related to that. If we then turn around three or four years later and try to bond for a one, one million or one point two million dollar fire truck, then we've got another two, three, four hundred thousand in soft costs related to that. When you smoosh them together, you save a couple hundred thousand, a few hundred thousand maybe on those soft costs, because it all becomes part of one singular bond transcript, as opposed to two different bond transcripts that are sold to institutional investors on the open market. So, i- it's easier, it's, it's cheaper in the long run to bond once, take one big bite out of the apple, instead of two medium-sized bites of that same apple.
Right, excellent, little question on that.
Sure.
So, you put a fire, a fire truck on a twenty-year, what's the interest difference in that? It's like a five-year bond with fire. And usually they go reserve status after ten years, so you're going to leave the rate here in fifteen years. Um, the fire truck, it's going to be on reserve status, they're gone.
So what's the question?
What's, I mean, are we, hey, you know, we say they're not going to have interest, and we're going to be paying them if it's gone, like.
I, I, I don't, I, I don't know the answer to that. If you don't mind, I'll take it down, and I'll see if I can find the interest on that.
You're just saying that it's all costs on the bond versus the interest on the backside. Higher up the side of the paper, that's the whole message.
Okay. Andrew, do you mind taking? Hold, hold on, hold on real fast, I want to get through. All right, go ahead.
It don't look like if you have that many runs, or the fire engine, let's say, for its expenses, for example, grid run for ten years.
Okay. We'll talk about runs here in a little bit. Uh, and how many, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about the runs, I'll mark your question down, and, and I want to get through, I want to get through a few of the things, okay? All right, that's all right, appreciate it. Can you re, can you rephrase your question?
Were, were there plans, uh, for all that to pay, or, so just a few plans? For this?
There, there were, but, there were, but I don't mind, no, I am going to be a little forward, the twelve point seven number is just out, so if you're basing your questions on that number, it, it's.
Despite the law, I do take off from that. Did you say it, or, because, and then you said plans, or they're not going to give, and it's a common, based.
We, we did. We're, we're not getting rid of our architect, we're getting rid of the construction manager.
How much do you pay? The, you're on it.
Uh, the plans were. Oh, we don't have plans?
Speculative design, after what they looked at.
So.
Plans are in specs, or there's been no cost, and, so, yeah, I mean, there's those.
So, so, so a lot of times when we structure this, the, those fees, architecture engineers, legal fees, bond council fees, insurance, et cetera, the list goes on, there's a lot of them. Everybody's usually paid out of the bond. Because, because what, what the, everybody understands is that the district has very limited funds. There's been a lot of discussion on what those funds are. Uh, I think we've got a budget of four hundred four hundred and seventy-five, four hundred and eighty thousand, uh, approved and appropriated. Okay. Excellent. So, those funds don't account for the costs of architecture, engineering, legal, other services, so everybody sort of holds on to, uh, their invoices, and then gets paid out of the bond issuance, and that's what I talked about when I talk about soft costs. That's what the soft costs are, for example, Peters Franklin, Jeff Peters, he's a guy that was sitting here at a couple of the other meetings, he's our financial consultant, very good guy, uh, very good financial consultant. He has been working on this for five years, uh, and has not, has carried those costs of working on this for five years, hasn't charged the district. So, yes, we've paid people, no, we haven't paid all of them.
Why didn't he look up grants and other things, things above him for five years, for, didn't, we, five years, well, now you want to come up with this.
So.
And now you hire, some, they're comfortable to come up, which is ridiculous, you don't have a plan, or you don't have any else. Then you want to dump that on us for, um, four point seven billion.
And again, that number twelve point seven is gone, right? So, so we're working at, we're.
Not even bringing it to the community that we want to go into starting, if this guy is a financial wizard. Five years ago, you should have started looking at grants, anything out there for the federal government, state government, go with your banks, you know?
Financial advise, a financial advisor or grant writer are two separate positions. I mean, I do understand what you're saying, but, but those are two separate positions. One of the questions was, did we seek out grants and did we hire a grant writer, and the answer is no. Uh,
You know, to be such a good financial.
Again, again, a financial advisor and a grant writer are two different things.
Then why didn't he get somebody to be such good with it, to be in?
Because grant writers, because grant writers don't work for free.
Yeah, why just get grant, but to do a grant, I mean, this has been going on for eight years, and the wheels still turn.
Okay, so, in any case, I'm going to, I'm going to go through a couple more questions, I'll, I'll take that one down. Um, is this a permanent tax change? It's a twenty-year bond issuance, so twenty years is pretty long, um, permanent, no, long, yes. Uh, what areas are covered or to be covered? Uh, same service areas, of course, we've got mutual aid with other departments, uh, to respond. Is this a referendum question? Not at the moment, because we haven't come up with a new number. Uh, we go in, we, we were in referendum question territory, uh, with that twelve point seven, uh, million number. We have obviously revoked that number, so we don't know if we're in referendum territory or not, we don't know if it is a referendum question, or if it won't be a referendum question. Uh, the criteria for a referendum question, I think, is, uh, costs exceeding one percent of the assessed value of the district, but don't quote me on that. Um, but I think that's a criteria for it. Um, how long will the increase on taxes last, again, that's, that's twenty years? Do we have an agreement with Camp Atterbury? Not in agreement, we bill them separately, whether or not they pay is sort of a different question. Can we hold them accountable for not paying? Hard to sue the federal government. Um, then, then, yeah, then let the, then let, let the people suffer, yeah, right, so.
Three days have their own firewall. I spent twenty years in the military, air three military days, oh, no, that's our former firewall.
They don't.
They do.
They do.
They do, but, you, they don't work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
You have what, two points here?
No, we have twenty-seven.
All the time?
So, uh.
They have one, they have a weekend, so, a lot of times at weekends, nobody there. So, I mean, that's why we go over there.
So why don't they, I mean, there's a lot of challenges, I've talked about
man with money that you guys have talked about, and that building is fifteen thousand worth of fees. Is that awful, including a bowling alley?
Oh, yeah.
I wish. And it's, it's well, I don't think it includes a bowling alley, but I wish it did, that'd be great. All right, well, hold on, hold on, folks. All right, we'll, we'll keep we'll keep going along here, so when would the proposed tax increase go into effect? So given the pause of the bond, it's sort of an unclear answer under the previous, uh, thought it was going to go into effect in twenty twenty-eight. Lease finance structure, you can't, uh, you can't have an increase in the amount of taxes to pa- make payments on the bond until you have a structure built. So, twenty twenty-eight would have been the year the, uh, uh, increase would have went into effect. Again, it's unclear at this point, given we paused everything. Any assistance from county or state, no, uh, not really. Um, have we looked at any grants, we talked about that, uh, why would it cost? Why would it cost more for my house compared to my neighbor's house? So your house is either assessed at a higher value by the county auditor than your neighbors, and you pay more taxes on your assessed value, or it could be a second home, lake house, uh, rental property, um, which isn't subject to the same homestead deductions as your primary residence. So that's why your neighbor's house might be less, or your house might be more, as far as the tax goes. Uh, how did the tax increase happen? There's no tax increase related to this particular project, we paused everything. So any tax increases you have had, this has nothing to do with that, it has probably a lot to do with your assessed value of your home. Uh, how was the project bid? Project has not been bid yet, we don't have complete drawings, we have a site plan, um, we're working through that, we're working on our revisions to reduce the footprint of the building. Uh, can we build an expandable building? Maybe, uh, I'm ha- ha- it's sort of the same question with taking bites out of the apple that I talked about with soft costs. Maybe we can build an expandable building, if we build a four million dollar building now, and need a million dollars in additions in five years, how are we going to pay for that million dollars in additions when our budget doesn't cover a million dollars, because it's four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? We have to issue another bond, so then you incur more soft costs for that. So, the answer is maybe an expandable building, but there are some ramifications or drawbacks to having an expandable building, as opposed to a structure that we can, yeah, a structure that we can grow into. And the answer is yes, however, I don't have the figures for anticipated growth. I will say that this this area's growth will likely not come from commercial, um, it likely will not come from, you know, uh, three hundred helm subdivision. Uh, and you guys also have to remember that a third of the district's territory is just completely untaxed. We have the, we got the park, sorry, got, got the park, and we've got Camp Atterbury that eat up a lot of the land. Uh, there's not interstate access, so we're not going to get warehouses like in Whiteland to to increase the AV of the, the district and then fund this. There have been projections for a general increase in AV of essentially single-family homes, because that's really all that's here. Um, I don't know what those are off the top of my head, I, I want to say, don't quote me to it, it was two to three percent is what the financial consultant, um, predicted, uh, which re- actually reduces the amount of the tax you would pay directly related to this particular building and this particular bond. Um, and I would, and, and last, lastly, if you haven't listened to the meeting where he was at, and he gave the financial disclosures, I think that was the August fourteenth meeting, it's posted on YouTube, I gave you the YouTube handle. I encourage you to go back and take, take a look at that, or listen to that, uh, again.
I wouldn't be, I don't think it's going to be that much, but not that.
I, I think you're right.
On that's, that's one difference.
Right.
Absolutely. That we take care of, now. Because it's not going to be a layer, it's no deep, it's going to be broken, I think.
Let me go to him, and I'll come back to you, because he was standing up for a sec, yes, sir.
We know how much money we have, that, probably makes how many groceries we're going to give to our family. We know that Trafalgar was at an eighteen cent per cost, hundred cost basis, now they're down to fourteen because of their budget and everything, it just doesn't have a name. Um, have we A, looked at what this community can actually afford if we were eighteen cents? Like, what does eighteen cents for a hundred cost basis give us money for a bond on the backside? I think we need a hundred and eighty reverse engineer this, we're wanting this massive fire station, we want new fire trucks and all this, and well, it's just going to be, you know, an extra thirty cents on the hundred for, yeah, well, maybe we should live a little community can afford on their, in our basis, and build off of that, what kind of fire station, fire truck can we afford versus a big giant block list? And then the other thing I'm kind of curious is, is this part of the master plan to incorporate all of West Side and Johnson County, all into one big half the family, where they're going to pull up the tax money for the big districts and send them off to the Bayland districts, to where we is that, is that the master plan, is that what we're trying to do here? Is there a master plan?
I no one on this board, other than one meeting that has happened regarding what you're referring to as the L merger, I, I am unaware of it, I, I, other than this one meeting that I wasn't a part of and wasn't privy to the conversation. Uh, I don't believe anyone here on the board was in that conversation as well. I, I can't give you more information, I can't just create information and tell you it's going to happen next month. I can't tell you, it, it might happen in the next ten years, might happen in the next five, I have no idea. I really, I really have no idea. You're, you're.
But an eighteen cent cost basis, to give us another seven cents on the hundred, how much would that give us?
So I looked at the, so the cost basis that we had in the nineties.
Twenty-one.
And now it's what?
So it does need to come up, I think, and most of us here, when the original meeting said, do you need a new fire station? We need another fire truck, I, I'm understanding we got that influence for three years, um, we need to do an approach with kid gloves, you know, what can the community afford that's fair to what the founders can do? Again, how can we be good service of non-moving forests and make a plan that this community can swallow and move enforcement, that makes hence them, what they need to do in their job, like, I want them to succeed, I want them to do their job, I want them to have nice equipment and nice facility. We got to do with the reason, and what you can fix.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, go on. How many more? Jacob, how many more?
I've got forty. And we're, and we're on twelve. So.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I tried to take down all your questions, so.
Hold on, we've been told we're not answering questions, this is our opportunity to answer the questions, and we can't keep answering questions and taking questions at the same time. You want us to answer the question previously asked?
This is, probably, plays off, and talking about finance. That's the question that I asked.
Your current Q fund is twenty thousand dollars.
It was two hundred and twenty-five thousand in January, or December of last year.
That is unappropriated money that still remains in the account, what is appropriated is twenty thousand dollars.
So you have to balance.
But it's not.
And then you got to balance, and then it's now, we
The three seventies, but there's only twenty that's appropriated, we have to go in front of council to reappropriate them.
Right, because I need, you have to, online, this, your current, so, wire me on to that, and then the money that you just put into that account on the annual basis, you know, fund this, or station, or fund the purpose of that, right?
We are trying to. It's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year.
Plus, if you're going to, like you said, seventy.
Right. But, I believe you posted a new fire truck's a million dollars.
It is.
So if we take
those, you, you bring it.
And purchase that engine till a new station's built, right? Old fit, so.
You have to leave it. Face of that, with, if you're getting hundreds of units, for a year. And the pilot of the garage, or lease, years, how can you do? Those components are sufficient, so above that.
Spending, no other needs are, neither are any of them.
Um, what's a plan for the current firehouse or, or the building we're in? So I, I think the plan was for it to be donated and to be turned into a community park. I've heard some rumblings of a, a hundred-year lease that supposedly on this property. I did a title search, I, a, a brief title search. I pulled the deed, and I did not find a hundred-year lease for this property, nor did I find restrictions in the I pulled the deed and I did not find a hundred year lease for this property, nor did I find restrictions in the deed that would prohibit sort of the transfer of this property. And, and then I also want to add, the district does not own this property. Right? So that's owned by the department, which is separate from the district, but nonetheless, they kind of work symbiotic relationship. I'm going to do a little bit more research into this hundred year lease that everyone thinks exists. If you have institutional knowledge of it, meaning you know, the person who executed it, let me know because I want to be aware about it as well. Did the merger between the districts already happen? No. There was a merger between Nevada Township and Hensley Township creating Southern Johnson County or Southern Johnson Township, I think is what they refer to. Township merger does not affect fire districts. They're or its revenue sources, they're completely separate. The township and the trustee's office. Their, their largest expenditure is maintaining the cemeteries. So I, I didn't look into it. I don't know how much it costs to maintain. I think there's four or five county cemeteries that the trust trustee maintains. Again, I don't know what the cost of that is, but no, there's no merger, at least between the fire districts. As there's been, we have one discussion regarding that. We don't have any information as to when that might occur or if it will ever occur. But no, there has not been a merger between the districts. If there's a combining of fire districts pursuant to the L merger, will the tax rate be lowered? No, it related to this project, it will stay. It will stay here with this district. That was a project finance, simple answers. Through bond proceeds, bonds paid by property taxes, just like anyone here goes and buys a car, right? You well, maybe not a car. You buy a house, you mortgage a house, right? You pay on your promissory notes. It's the same thing. The only source of revenue or not the only source, but really the primary source of revenue for all government is taxes, right? So can't finance anything without increasing taxes or utilizing taxes in one way, shape or form. That's the other funding source potential. But even those generally are taxes. Let's say you get a federal. Good for them. Eli, do they have a house there? The Lilly family.
I had no idea. Nor do I care. Do you guys have a house in Nevada? Any of you?
Yeah, all of them do. All, all of them will see the same tax increase you will see.
But you guys planned it, expected it. These folks have not planned for it and did not expect it, did not plan. You guys are knowing that you can afford the difference.
A lot of these people, no, we're different of that amount. Why? And we're here not saying no need this firehouse, but just be accountable for where the money goes and to have the best interest of the people and to bring down the amount that's spent. And we're here to just, just hold that capital stake and watch where it goes to make sure that maybe things don't happen when nobody's looking.
Appreciate.
I appreciate your guys' time in the matter.
I, I, I appreciate it as well. Can we, you want to talk after? And maybe I can address.
That's not your first for a lender.
The township task rig or the district tax rate? Di- di- districts and townships are two separate taxing bodies. Alright, so the answer is just the fire protection district tax rate. And I, and I'll address again. These will be posted probably tomorrow. This video will probably post it tomorrow. You can listen to it again. I, I think it catches my voice pretty well. Probably doesn't catch some of your questions very well, but hopefully it catches me. Was the fire board non-compliant on previous audits? So not this board. I guess that's the first statement to make. So I think there was a previous audit, 2018 to 2021 time period. I, I think those results have been posted. Is that right? Yeah, so. Yeah, so it's a good question. I believe Andrew was appointed after that audit had actually taken, taken place, meaning when the SBOA comes, comes in the office and looks for audit years, those years Andrew wasn't here. This, this board as it sits today was not here, right? So there's been new membership of the board. I've talked about another audit. Again, we're hoping to get those results very soon. You guys will have those results. We can't publish them. The State Board of Accounts will. I, I, I guess I don't really have a comment on what happened in previous years. Hopefully I can share with you better results of this audit and I think we probably will. This is a pretty good board.
Audit this far, there was never a contract in place with the board and the fire department. We need monies transferred to, we don't pay salaries, pay part, you know, there's not, there's no accountability as far as having a contract. Do we now have any contract set in place with the board and the fire department? When was that contract? So in 2022, I mean, when you came onto the board, I mean, when did that contract was official? So wasn't it 2021?
I went out on the board.
Well, I know. That's my capacity. Since you've taken over, when, when was that contract?
I cannot, I know we've had it in the last three previous years. I cannot remember the fourth off the top of my head.
Shouldn't a new audit be completed? Yes, we're in the, in the, in the middle of it. Actually, we're at the end of it. So we'll get those results to you. Or the State Board of Accounts will get the results to you. Why has the district tripled its revenue over the last few years? I don't think that's really a fair question. The district has asked for increases in its general budget over the last several years. Previously, I don't think the district ever asked for increases in budget. I think today there was a requested increase at the county council. I don't know what the percentage was. I think it's 4%. 4% requested increase. Again, that's not that's 4% on the budget. That's not a 4% increase in your taxes. Alright, 4% on the budget. Uh, which, which.
Change. It's still same levy based off the assessed value. Same thing they do in municipalities. You're getting a letter from the DGLF based off your test value. You're what's available. That's all that was put in. They're saying we're raising taxes 4%, we're not changing the levy. We tax at the same rate. But based off the accept, the assessed value, there's more money available that we have to ask for.
Legal recourse to force Atterbury to pay the bills. I kind of addressed that already. Suing the federal government, assuming we'll just stick with the federal side of it. There's a lot of hurdles to jump through. State as well. Governments in general, a lot of hurdles to jump through. Got to go through. Can't remember the name of it. Well, regard, regardless, you go through the administrative hurdles and then you can finally get your, go ahead. You're okay to sue the government in state court or federal court if it's the federal government. What's the cost of doing that? On a ambulance bill? Or legal fees? I, I, I don't know. I guess the, there could be a process perhaps to try to file small claims against the federal government. I would anticipate those will not be successful.
So what happens if we don't go there?
If we don't go there, then people will just die. I, I guess people just won't get the service. I guess if someone breaks their hip and they're in Camp Atterbury, they just stay there.
Besides, it takes forever. You're going to lose money trying to get it. You're going to spend more money trying to get it. Then you're going to get wasted.
So do we go for ambulance services run? Yes, we do.
They did pay at one point like a large sum or the bat, those large sum and bat. What was that? I mean, I forget what that number was and when that was.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I don't think it was as large of a sum. It wasn't like hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know? I think it was, I think it was like a few thousand. That's kind of circular, circular in a way though, because you're also paying your federal taxes for Atterbury. And I know it spreads it over the nation, but you're like begging for Peter to pay Paul kind of thing, right? A little bit. Uh, let's see. Oh, can the community hire an attorney to represent and separately advise you guys? Yes. Nothing stopping you from hiring private counsel to advise you with respect to this bond issuance. Go for it. Will there be more public hearings? Yes. We officially, officially paused in writing. The bond issuance, there will be at least two more public hearings once we come back with another number. That was a good, why do we help people that don't pay taxes in this district? I think we've kind of addressed that point, but mutual aid is part of it. Good morals is maybe another part of it. Questions about run statistics? Chief, do we have any? So, so I think that's it. I think that's all I have.
Law, if people aren't able to access that live screen, does that really constitute following them?
Yes, it does. Because if you look through the very end of that provision that came into effect on July 1st of this year, says a technology failure doesn't void any action taken at the meeting, essentially is what it says. I do want, sorry, sorry. I want to say, so I, I look at people live watching this as, as we're talking. This meeting only has two people watching it live. Previous ones have had 11 or 15. Most of you people, most of you guys show up, which is fine. The answer, no, doesn't invalidate the meeting. This is the only technology I have. I'm sorry. If, if feel free to, you know, this woman right here is live streaming Facebook, is it? So she's streaming Facebook. No fire department. Well, I think there's a part, the Facebook page. So you're talking about. Okay. Yeah. There's no website, which is something that I've. I'm going to try to modify the text so it's easier for people to type in number one and two. Yeah, I can. Well, I know, but it, but if it says, if it says Nevada Fire Protection District Meeting, you know, nine, nine 11, 2025, I hope someone can type that in. I understand there's issues with the length of the link. Working on it. Yes, ma'am.
Biggest survivors that is full time and that, that fire station is huge. Why would we need something that big down? I know we need a bigger firehouse though to house a larger fire crew. That's why we don't have one here because they can't get it in the building.
Your power is not full time.
They're not. But they have a huge firehouse and they cost what? 2.3 million? Okay, which I had seen for 2.7. That's a.
When was that firehouse built? It's 2017. That's 10, you know, eight years ago.
Alright.
Okay, so with our budget, it's based off of the levy of 11% based off the assessed value of the district. Okay, they have said that I believe it was 6.7, the assessed value of the district went up 6.7% over the last year. So there's more dollars available for us to appropriate into our budget. So we're not, basically what they're doing is for lack of better terms, the number went from $10 to $14. And we're just applying that 11 cents to $14 now versus $10. That's all it is. We're not increasing. The levy did not increase. It's the same thing that every Francis Lakes is going to do their budget next week. They have an increase. I don't know if it's increasing their taxes or not, or if they're just doing the simple AD.
You didn't ask for that 4% when they go to, because that's from the county, right? Okay, so you didn't ask for that 4% to go to some other departments or somebody else?
They'd gone spending.
So, so the most value goes up. And we pay more in taxes and you guys get more money. But you're saying that shouldn't, that shouldn't affect this. It shouldn't be a problem.
We're not raising the rate at which you are taxed.
But the percentage is the same. It's the amount of money that our house assessed at the war.
We're not controlling that.
I understand is that we all pay a base. Our, our, our tax under our one, the assessed one raises that. So if they don't get the 4% on the budget, it doesn't just sit there. The county would use it in other departments. I mean, they can send it to Wyoming. They can send it to other places, right?
No, that's a tax assessment on this.
Those are a big lump money that's been sitting there for all these years that we didn't ask for?
No, because our levy never increases.
So the, basically the 11 cents is often in, is that what you're saying? On the 11 cents. So this 4% does have nothing to do with increasing that current 11 cents.
I can't remember any of those.
Your founders has part-time employees. We have the same number of part-time employees. So identically, we are, as far as the way we operate, pretty identical. This is not a sole volunteer statement. We pay people to be here 24 hours a day.
I just don't really see why we need to spend so much money on a new building. I mean, is it all on the UCL?
Well, they're trying, they're, they're trying this. I, I want them to answer, but I don't want the audience to answer.
Yes, it'll be, definitely a large portion of the founder's building and our building is just equipment. So all their fire apparatus is in there. We currently have staff people that has to sit outside that, you know, the safety with your tax dollars that I can't protect and to hail outside. It's got a training room for continuing education, office space. It's got living quarters. And kitchen, dayroom for people who live there 24/7.
It sounds like the Taj Mahal.
I, I entered the $12.
From what I understand, so everybody understands, the 12 million. From what I understand, so everybody understands, the twelve million has been put off.
It is dead.
Correct.
Correct. So twelve million's dead.
Correct.
Okay, what you guys are going to do is come back, go and get a new plan, build it at your founders or whoever else's, and come back with a new number. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the twelve million is dead, so that's, that's me right now. So what we need to do is wait until you guys come back with the next plan and we have our public meeting again.
And you'll have at least two of them.
Okay, so my understanding.
I got a question, folks, that something's not been spoke about. You can refer to Barbersville, Edinburgh, Fowler. How does Nittva compare to those communities? Is it bigger or smaller?
No way.
Are you talking square coverage?
Do we need that or do we need better?
Are you talking sport population, square, square mileage coverage?
Our market has to pay. Square mileage, I know it's thirty-six square miles. And what is Fowler, what is Edinburgh, Barbersville? We're going to compare it, compare it. What do we really need?
They're back.
We might be forward, we might not.
Got forty-five answers to questions. We don't know. Okay, that's one. Take it all. Appreciate your time. Okay, take care.
They don't have the exact answers for you right now.
That, that meeting, I had a question. Why we won't, you mentioned that you were able to design and build in community? And I had why not a design in community? Why wouldn't you have someone design a building and then build it?
All right, so again, hasn't gone out for public bid yet. We will go out for public bid based on designs prepared by the architect and the engineer. So I don't, I don't know if there's maybe a misstatement from us in previous meetings, but this will go out for public bid to whoever wants to bid on the project based on our designs and we would hopefully get the lowest number that way. No, I cannot because they have not been prepared yet. We haven't prepared the new designs yet.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Hey, gentlemen.
Okay, all right. Hold on, let, she's been, bear with me.
Hey, could everybody just do me a favor, please, real quick? There's a lot of side conversations that's been brought up a couple of times. We're not trying to be rude. We'll sit here all night if we have to. Please raise your hand instead of just barking out. I didn't mean that rudely. But just raise your hand, we'll call on you and we will get to you, okay? Please, thank you.
Going to be smaller. So are we going to get in a situation where if we approve plans and that goes forward and then in a couple of years, we're like, oh crap, we don't have the money we normally had coming in that we planned on coming in and we have to raise the taxes once again? Have we considered that or is there a tax expert who consider that? Do you have a consulting firm that specializes in the tax, tax portion of it or?
Fair question. I, a little bit over my head and I don't know the answer to it. I, I, I.
I can't get out.
Being phased out, but we need to keep that in mind. Our taxes will absolutely be going up at county level. Don't believe me, look it up. Um, it's a three-year phase out and we need to make sure that that's being taken into account because I am not from this county, full disclosure, I'm from Jackson Township, this county, yes, the Jackson Township. They raised our, uh, they changed our fire township or.
Isn't that in.
Fire territory and, um, my first payment is two hundred fifty-seven dollars a month. So I, I have a lot of, uh, concern for that kind of being slipped through here too. So I just want to make sure that we're taking into account all of those things that are coming down the road. Because I know I have people that contact me every day saying that they're losing their house. They can't afford a section. So it's about.
And you're in Morgantown?
I'm in Morgantown, I'm Jackson Township. We changed our fire department to a fire territory.
Okay. Um, I don't have, I don't, sorry, I'll shoot from the hip a little bit. I don't have a good answer for you on the lit tax. I will say that related to this project, once it's bonded, once the bond transcript is sold, presumably purchased by Huntington Bank, Chase Bank, Stiefel, whoever, financial institution, um, we will have the money to fund the payments on the bonds regardless of what the county does in the future. That makes sense? And I don't know, I'm, I can't give you a bit, any more information on the lid. I just can't.
So yes, that does make sense, thanks. So are we only, finally, I want to be checking out the present. Or are we also carrying in the Edinburgh fire?
So, before we keep bringing up for Fowler's building, that was the first, hey, go to get the plans for this and start looking at it. We can look at.
Right. But I just know, that's why I'm.
Yeah, you look at it.
Yes, I mean, you guys have to look at any other fire township or the place they're from, something like that, yeah, right?
Now, to your answer, the Edinburgh fire station, I'm waiting for a call off from the contractor that built it. They're talking to their architect to see what that building would cost now. And they built it at two point eight, including the land. So I don't know what we call it.
Charlie, will you forward me an email with that?
Who am I going to forward it to, Dave?
Fortunately, you can forward it to me. All right, get it from Lee. Yeah, thank you.
Sir.
Oh, hold on.
Which part?
Any of it, all of it.
So.
I'm yelling, Johnson County politician is on the last week, he's here, he's building a building. Now, does the state have anything, does anyone else?
It's.
Well, sort of, so.
Sort of.
So, so. Now, it, it's, it's a sort of because the, the DLGF, the Department of Local Government and Finance will ultimately have some sort of say in it. That their say is more related to the process in issuing the bonds as opposed to the bond amount. So there's one check and balance. We're talk, oh, go ahead.
They might cut the price down.
I don't think they can.
Any more questions?
We're insolvent, David, 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 self, and so on. By the time she's a better predator for Franklin, she's been great, three summers, half a million, actually continued work. Anybody that's been wanting, or even go to everyone else, she's great.
I don't.
And still be able to talk about lists and all that stuff. So, that's all. But we can talk to the disclosures at the next meeting. All that may be information.
Same, same.
At the Facebook page for the, uh, fire district that we can actually place this meeting and we have some information and Brian and things right now. I believe enough, we will be bar or contract on Facebook, it's very difficult to find. I've gone through the YouTube, I've gone through the transcript, so the transcript is not always accurate, especially the numbers. Uh, so we just, I think maybe all this data may just.
Written form.
Start with another disclosure and Brian.
Once we come up with a new number. All right.
Quickly go to T V and the bond bank and I could use that. They put some on the bond issuance or it's not a good bit.
I, I don't, I don't think we would ever qualify for the bond name. I think those. I, I can't remember why. I feel like we looked at that before, but I don't think we qualified for it. So I can get you a more advanced answer on that, but I'll, I'll, I'll double check and maybe come back to you with some other thoughts. Um. I think the project size, I think they only issue on smaller projects like a million or less. I'm not, I don't quote me on that, please, but I'll, I'll look into it again and come back with better information.
Oh, Ian. I'm, I'm trying not to beat a dead horse, okay? But we got Barley, the Fowler, Edinburgh, these are all, we could do anything. Great deal, Ian, a great deal on runs, but Ian finally had to do. And we don't have that here. So why do we need a fire party as big as the state about? And why do we need, what is it? Oh, it's twelve thousand, twelve thousand.
Yeah.
Why, why can't we reduce that now to like, I mean, it's moving back. There are more trucks out here, right?
Well, on the other side.
Let's hear again, five.
We own seven.
Seven, got seven. Okay, all of them could be in a building, right? But we don't know what the hell they need, we're named, okay, but it don't pay. Yeah, they thought we could do this project for around four million. So does the ground pay for it?
Yes.
Yes.
The ground just paid for it.
Yes.
So all we're doing, setting up a building, uh, confirms.
And, and, and buy, and buying a truck.
Like I said, those dollars over twenty years and it's going to take three years, it's the gifts.
Now, the ground is paid for, but it's not level ground, is that correct? And we've got to be a lot of work done with that ground.
It will be site work that will need to be done. There is site.
A lot of site work.
They're paying.
So I, I don't, yeah, don't have the exact figures on the dirt work because dirt work is related to the size of the structure. If we're reducing the size of the structure, hopefully we reduce the dirt work and the runoff and detention ponds necessary to capture what we, what comes off the building top. Um, I, I can't remember, there's a lot of questions. Which, what, which was your question? Which one?
Twelve thousand per foot fire, I mean, thousand, okay?
Well.
Compared to other districts that have. I mean, I'm, I'm prepared like Shelbyville, you know, I mean, they have about seven hundred ones just on EMS per month.
Do they really?
This is, this is a year, right? These numbers are for the year, year today, I think, year today. I mean.
I mean. On the side of sixteen thousand square foot building, look at to a builder that has an engineering Shelbyville. And he said that he could probably build a building for about two and a half million dollars with a million dollar of site work. He was saying three and a half million dollars to build their original plan. Now they're going down and that's a local guy that lives in our territory, right? I don't know where the numbers come from.
Well, you have to go out to places to read it.
Well, and that's not having to be hard, but we ought to take the members fire, their, their old plans and throw them up in three bits just to get a soft cost on like, like for a soft estimate, like what would you, what would you guys charge? Give us a reference idea of what we're at, just because we're all over the place. We don't have to take permanent business, I just want to get it out to some local builders, give us a rough estimate. I think that would give you guys better numbers than what we're doing.
You should be considering, is this one in the right here? I mean, if it, if we're not in this a hundred year or whatever this, why can't we utilize what is here or selling that this? I say so.
That would have put the money towards the new. And that's where it's like that.
I mean, there is.
Hold on, this young lady's had her hand up asking for a black and purple. For the next, why we ask people to raise their hand, she's had her hand and, man, I'm sorry.
But.
My knowledge.
I know this since the last meeting, the sign that gets up here and I thought, okay.
You mean the new property?
Yes.
No, the district board purchased that property, it was before me. Um, why the signs aren't, I think.
It's fair.
Well, not just that, I mean, don't be.
This property, this property right here was.
The other one.
Well, yeah.
I think.
He said he's not, I mean.
I mean, I, I can tell you from the face of the deed, the ownership of this property is the volunteer fire department and the deed says for consideration of one dollar. So I'll consider that a donation. Um, whether the deed doesn't have any restrictions on it, to my knowledge, I haven't hired, or we haven't hired, a title company to perform a title search with respect to this particular property.
Does that be done? I mean, we're talking about handing this over, it's basically okay, this property, this building and not utilizing the funds that could be, be made from this building, from this sale or, or building back on this mod. Just going to pass it on to someone else instead of using it.
Point seven seven acres. I, point seven seven acres, I don't know the square footage in building.
It was, uh, two meetings ago, um, the Pan's River. Um, so the audit in twenty-one, uh, say audit, the board that you guys were not in, they didn't, according to the paperwork, it didn't do well, right? So you got lots coming. So. How much, do we have any idea how much funds were missed appropriated in the eighteen twenty-one timeframe and?
Yes, I can answer that because even though I wasn't here for that, since I was on the board, I had to complete the audit, there were no missing funds. Every dollar was accounted for, there was no missing funds whatsoever.
Take a general statement, don't count on the Department of Local Government Finance to stop any proposals that they submit because they did not stop ours. It's basically, here's our plan, approve it, and as long as it doesn't go over the maximum tax threshold, which mine, that isn't quite at the maximum, so found it to save you.
Well, they didn't back, I mean, they got the tax increase that twenty twenty-one, after that audit, they still were approved for that eleven cents.
I'm sorry, what?
No, I was.
Go ahead, sir, sir.
I, I remember briefly. They said they sent someone to Washington to watch it, ask for funds to help. Help with this project, uh, communes go, the community go. Were you not?
To go to Washington?
No, there's no one, let's say that.
I, that's, I don't think anybody said, that's. Probably, I, I don't know, but nothing about Washington DC. I can get, I can almost guarantee.
No, that's.
To ask for funds for this particular project.
I think you might, I'm paying attention.
Sorry, sir, your question was confusing because I thought you said, we said.
No, I didn't want to say someone said, I didn't, I was going to, I remember somebody saying, hey, woman went to Washington, that we owe my happy, did that outcome of that? So.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
The next scheduled board meeting is?
I think it's October first, I think.
I wonder if I. Oh, let me answer her. Can I answer her also? October one. Six thirty.
Has anybody met with the camp captain or major who's ever been charged with a camp? And since we take care of the camp, Colonel, maybe getting some federal. Maybe getting some federal funding from the camps, is there any way to do that?
Josh has been the one leading that with.
I mean, January twenty twenty.
Okay.
We've said break the law for years. And let's go back to October fourteen, we went back through all of our runs, so October fourteen. We built them for that, for like five years, uh, twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty three, you get it all repaid, you pay it like there in six months. You know, they said, this is all gonna give us with the state. Braves were set at, so two hundred fifty dollars for an engine, a hundred dollars for, a hundred fifty dollars for a ambulance or a squad vehicle, and then twenty dollars per hour per person. We go over there, we're only there for five minutes, they get built now. The thing is, we build them, they'll pay.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of not talking about building as much as maybe a partnership with them, since they're so big, and they're in our township. You know, a partnership with them, have, have, has anybody battled with the Colonel, is there a way to do that?
So they won't need the base. They're not allowed to bring you the base. The, the people that's work there. They're not supposed to come off the base. So they can't, uh, give their official aid, the market.
No, I'm talking about usually, financially, if, if there's any program in the military bases or anything, where uh, there's a lot of military bases that take up those towns and towns, and if there was something there that ain't, that ain't gonna explore, that's okay. Guys, go to the firehouse, you benefit from it, so we're gonna give so much money to that, because they might explore that. It may be that. I don't know. We don't know until you don't have.
Yeah, they, they really don't like talking, so. I mean, they don't.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
I have. How big is the fire?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
Hey, gee, I think it's hard, huh? This one?
Yeah.
Out there?
How many?
Uh, the last paper that seems five thousand thirty. And I have, it was, I don't know if that seems to the kitchen area or the rest of the area.
But we really are prepared.
Basically, we do a, we're, I know, it's clear.
And how about the grand? Somebody's writing, you know, this is, this is, this is, yes, what the hell, we knocking this down. Okay, nine hundred, level, build on this site, rules, we're gonna do starts, we got six acres. I know, but that's all some fixing to all build up, right? Yes, we just knocking down. And that's, and that's, we started, so there's a three, I was trying to drag here. It's kind of, we're building, I think it got past that. But no, that would be the one later, we live, so. Uh, if we built a firehouse here, it might not be as big as like the ones we've been speaking of, right? But if it's more than, then, they don't, we can build off the moment. Look at this.
Well, the thing is with this, is we have special orders, engines to fit in here, because we're gonna have ten foot doors. Our life house making money. To go up, I don't know what it would cost to remodel it.
I'm not talking about remote. I'm talking about just knocking the damn thing down. Like, we do this all the time. I worked for any of that public school. I do thousands of concerts a year. Okay, I know what it costs to, level this way, okay? Now, I don't know about what are you gonna want in the new park. I have no idea. Because I can't, I can't just roll around and see on this, but. No, it seems like you have milkshells.
Okay, top questions.
Any other questions? You're not addressing the public.
I can't address the public.
You're not addressing the public.
Hold on.
You're, I don't know if you're.
Do we need a firehouse as big as Barbersville, addressing the public, now? For.
You wanna adjourn?
Yeah, we can adjourn. I make the most of adjourn.
Move to adjourn?